Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
We're going to call it seven thirty six. Six thirty. Meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union Board, which is taking place today on Wednesday, July fourteenth. We are in the library at Bellas Falls Community High School. Maybe I should say beautiful Bellas Falls Community High School. And the Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union Board will come to order. Other adjustments to the agenda, Superintendent Pratt?
I have none at this time.
Okay, all right. Communications and couple of comments.
I have nothing in the chat unless anyone wants to speak up or anyone here.
Yeah, I just have a brief statement, then I'll head out of the meeting. I'm Paul Reese, a former custodian of eighteen years here. And I just want the taxpayers and the public to know that I filed a civil suit against Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union and the Bellas Falls High School for hostile work environment, hazing, hazing and harassment. I'm willing to work with anyone in the school district that comes to some type of agreement outside of court. I'll leave it at that, but it's very disturbing if you ever heard my account, what took place the last six months that I was employed here. My therapist and attorney at that time advised me for health reasons to get done and to leave this job. The school was well aware I had post-traumatic stress disorder from childhood trauma and letters were sent to this board explaining the situation and nobody took that into effect. And I almost had a nervous breakdown and had to get done. So that's all I want to say is the perfect little school building, a lot took place and can be discussed at a different time since you guys have an attorney and I'll represent myself. Well, I'll leave it at that. I do thank you for the eighteen years that I did work for you. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Paul. Minutes of June twenty third, twenty twenty one. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of June twenty third.
Do we have a second? I don't think we need a second, Mr. Curious. Priscilla has a second. All right. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
I thought the minutes were detailed. You know, it was hard to track everything that was said, but I thought they were adequate, a fair reflection of the discussion that occurred. So I would recommend, I don't believe there are any corrections needed.
Well, all right then. Okay. Ready for the question? I am going to roll call it to make sure that I don't miss anyone. Priscilla Lambert, how do you vote?
Yes.
George Smith?
I'll abstain because I wasn't there for the meeting.
Gotcha. Lynn Morgan?
Yes.
Jessica West Clark?
Yes.
Cheryl Charles?
Yes.
Molly Mannick?
Yes.
Okay. Appears that the minutes are approved. All right. Policy committee update. I got, I got this on for you, Priscilla, because we missed it at the last meeting. That's McKinney Vento, who I believe are policy chair. So I am going to defer to you.
Okay, yes. The only thing that might need correcting, because I did not look at it today, was that it has ESE, which is exceptional services. Let me see, exceptional student education. I believe that that is from Florida article and it probably was taken from that. So my, my committee gave me permission to change that, but I wasn't quite sure what ESE should be changed to. And maybe Chris could help me with that, whether it should be changed to just simply LEA or LEA person, or whether there's a different terminology, we should change the ESE to in the two places that it comes up in the, in the policy. Other than that, our committee accepted it and felt that it was ready to send to the board.
Superintendent's very.
Uh, yeah, I think we could just make those changes based on, you know, the LEA local education agency and that should take care of that.
Thank you.
Priscilla, would you like to offer a motion for our first read? I believe that's where we are now in the process. My friend, Chris?
Yes.
Yes, I would move that we accept the first reading and with those two corrections. It's one correction, one correction in two spots.
All right. Discussion under the motion. Hearing any discussion under the motion. The motion is to move the McKinney Vento policy for first read with corrections as noted. Let's kind of roll call it. Priscilla?
Yes.
George Smith?
Yes.
Molly Mannick?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay, we are moved for first read. Thank you. Report superintendent. And both, I want to preface the discussion by saying that both Lynn and Chris and I had a fair amount of discussion around this. I have to feel strongly, and we'll find out for the rest of the H board does, that we should have some understanding of how our hybrid outcomes compare to VTVLC outcomes. And Lynn explained to me some of the difficulties in making those comparisons. And of course, Chris and I have had the discussion as well. And I think that under the circumstances, because we have head professionals in the person of our superintendent, assistant superintendent, director of construction and support services, building principals, I kind of suspect to get thrown in the mix here too somewhere. Or you are, you are the professionals, you are the experts, and you have to tell us as representatives of the public who are not necessarily educators, how, how we evaluate what we did in the hybrid and how we compare that to what we did in VTVLC. So with those parts, I'm going to put full side on Chris.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we can look into as an administration. It'll, it'll take a little time because the VTLB, VTVLC and our local assessments, they're all intertwined. So we have to take them out, separate them all, the students who are VTVLC and, you know, rework the numbers and how it all, how it all played out. So I just going to need time to figure out how to do that and do my best to get it to you as soon as possible, not knowing what goes into it, because I've never had to, you know, separate the two before, because we've never been in this predicament. I can't give you a exact date of when we can do it. I would hope for September at the latest, but if we can get it done sooner, we will.
We are using the same test instruments for both programs. Is that correct, Chris?
Yeah, technically there is no difference than past years. It's just they're doing it through VTVLC, but there still are students. It still compiles just like every other time. So I just have to make sure that, you know, we're pulling out stuff that kids can't be identified like we all do. But, you know, if the board wants to see something like that, we'll do our best to put something together that or something very similar, just to give you an idea regards to what, how students in the schools in the hybrid, our cyber situation fared against the students who were doing it through VTVLC. So I'm guess, so I'm assuming that what you want to see is how did the two sides fare? So I'll do my best to try to do that for you guys, absolutely.
That's, that's my sense, but I think I would like to go around the table and the virtual table and see if there are any other questions and comments. We'll start with you, Cheryl, simply because you're sitting next to me. Any question or comment at all on this?
One thing I'd like you, Chris, to do for the public is to define the VTVLC, just so people know what we're contrasting, and then I will ask a question.
Yeah, the VTVLC was the Vermont Technical Learning Collaborative that the students who did not go through the hybrid program in Wyndham Northeast, they were still students within Wyndham Northeast, but they had the opportunity to go through the Vermont Learning Collaborative to do their education meeting. They did all their learning through their Vermont Learning Collaborative. And so, yeah, we, you know, we did have a handful, handful of students doing that. As we went back into closer and closer to reopening, you know, students started coming back. But, so that's what Vermont, St. Vermont Learning Collaborative.
Thank you. You know, I, I think we had a considerable number, really. I call it more than a handful personally. And I do think we look forward to being able to compare those results, even though we know that the state wasn't doing the same kind of testing this year. If you can, when you come back with additional information, let us know actually what tests were taken by which students so that we can understand what we're comparing. But I look forward to it. Thank you.
All right, questions? Molly?
I have none.
Priscilla?
I don't have questions, but I think that we do definitely need to keep in mind that there really is no way to compare the hybrid versus the VTVLC or to the total in-person, which is what you're not comparing it to. Students that could not make it in the VTVLC program dropped out and returned to us right away at the very beginning of the year, and we constantly had students coming back from there to work in our own, in our school programs because it was not being successful for them there. So if you're comparing the results there versus the ones here, you are only getting the students that stayed there, not the ones that came back and are working in our program and then are being tested in our program as a result of that. So you have a totally different group of students. You have a, students that could work in that environment and then the students that ended up having to work in our environment in comparison. So there's no way of comparing it and spending a huge amount of time on comparing is going to take a lot of our resources. So that in mind when you're doing this. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Priscilla. If anybody in the room is not aware of it, Priscilla Lambert spent many, many years in this building as that special educator, and I would lump Priscilla into the professional class. And your remarks, Priscilla, I think are deeply insightful and I certainly appreciate hearing them from you. George, any questions?
No questions. I think Priscilla pretty well summed it up. The, the issue is trying to quantify some sort of level of education between the different groups of students. So that's up to Mr. Pratt to sort out. But no, I know additional questions.
All right, thank you, George. Priscilla, Lynn Morgan?
No additional questions. Thank you, Priscilla. That was very helpful.
Jessica West Clark?
I have a couple of comments. First, knowing the numbers of kids from Grafton, I know there's no way Chris is going to be able to separate them out by school because they're small enough to be identifiable. I think it's going to be less than four kids per grade at the most. So that's going to be problematic for the data. And then I will make some general comments. I think the others are something I would rather discuss one-on-one with him or executive session, because it can also identify the educators. But we had a, the group of educators that went to VTVLC and the ones that we had non-SU educators teaching our kids because of the way the grades were divided up. There were some that had no experience in online learning at all. And honestly, for the first semester, they were not very effective, really through no fault of their own, because they were teaching something they had no training or experience in. And then there were educators that were very effective because they did have experience in that. I really don't think it's going to be a fair comparison for anybody to pull those numbers out. It might be worthwhile to have the data, but I just don't know if there's going to be anything that Chris can put in a presentable report that's going to be of value to anyone. Those are my comments.
Jessica, thank you for those comments, because I think we do need to revisit this only meeting again at our regular meeting at the end of the month. And the board sentiment seems to largely line up with Chris's concerns about being able to provide us with both cogent and valuable data. So I would encourage you, I suppose the protocol would be through your chair, to contact Chris and Lynn. I guess the way to do that would be contact Chris and Lynn, copy to Jack Brier as your board chair, and give your comments in writing. And the same really goes for you as well, I think, Priscilla. Copy the board. I do very much appreciate the fact that we have a couple of board members here who are supportive in their concerns for how we use administrative time. I still personally think it's a valid comparison to try to determine where we stand with outcomes between the two programs. And when I say the hybrid, I'm talking about the fact that we were in class sometimes and we were remote sometimes. But anyway, I think we've pretty much covered the waterfront on this one. And down to reports, six A, item two, which is guidance from administration regarding areas of concern and suggested recommendations. This once again is one that Chris and I have already kicked around a bit. And bluntly, what I'm hoping is that you can get a conversation started, Chris, that you can engage your boards with. And I don't think it's going to be a one and done here. Talk about what the parameters might be tonight and set a timetable for addressing. Certainly have school coming out very quickly. And it would be nice to know that we get the ground running in terms of head recovery. So that rather lengthy introduction, which I apologize to anyone who's not yet insider. What can you tell us, Chris?
All right. So based on the work of the recovery team has done, I'm going to, tonight, what I'm going to do is review the problems of practice, which are the concerns and the goals and strategies, which are what we're going to do. And I'm going to identify each of the domains as we go, just to give you a better understanding. The areas that I'll be sharing tonight, we will start addressing these in September of twenty twenty one, this coming September. And they're part of the phase two of recovery planning and implementation that is required for us to start spending the ESSER grants. So starting with the first domain, which we spoke about before, which covers socially emotional learning, mental health and wellbeing. Problems of practice that is part of the exercise we went through as a recovery team, I'm going to read off the problems of practice and the goals and strategies that we have thus far. So the first one, problems of practice under socially emotional learning and mental health, we have, we have experienced a significant increase in the number of students needing additional support for the wellbeing since returning to school after COVID closure due to the isolation, lack of connection, along with the inability to do things the way we've always done it. So for that phrase there, the goal and the strategy is, and we worked as a recovery team in the if-then kind of area. So if we engage in multi-tiered systems of support, then we will create wraparound services focused on mental health and student family wellbeing. Also, if all schools are trauma-informed, then we will better be able to meet students' social, emotionally needs and create a healthier school environment. We will ensure trauma-informed practice will be continued through collaboration with the work we're doing with Dave Mellett. Next one, which is also tied to socially emotional, is if we assure teaching and staff have the opportunity to receive comprehensive training and resources to support the children affected by trauma by having district-wide training in responsive classroom, then all students will be engaged in caring community in their classrooms. And the final one for domain one, if WNSU can develop more detailed systems to assist recovery teams to analyze, analyze students' needs more effectively, then weekly students' support the team meetings and will be more productive. So those were the one domain we entered, the problems of practice, and then the goal and the strategy, what we're going to do under that domain. Keep in mind, you know, further conversation will, for all of these recovery team, you know, we look at specific activities, implementation plans and the resources we need. I think in the sake of keeping it under control and to time, I'm just going to discuss the problems and practice and goals and strategies like, you know, we discussed the other day. So the second one is engagement and intruency. And the problems of practice that we, we came up with, we have experienced an increase in the number of students significantly disengaged in the school since March of twenty twenty. Second is instructional practices and professional development were not focused on twenty-first century teaching, learning and practices, meaning we all know we're not prepared, I don't think, not just us, but in general throughout the nation and state, we're not prepared to take on the hybrid instruction, the remote instruction that we did. So that's what that means when we say that. And three, families do not see the connection of school to career starting in kindergarten. So the goals and strategies. If we employ a home-to-school liaison, then we will be more successful in connection with our hard-to-reach families and take at risk students to provide services and support addressing socially emotional health and wellbeing. If we increase student engagement, then we will become invested in their school and success. And then if we hire the district diversity coordinator, which the state has encouraged us to do, then we will increase the school engagement by ensuring all students and staff are feeling included and supported in the school environment and have a voice and a choice in the decisions that affect their personal experiences at school, both academically and co-communicatively. And the final one for, for number two is if WNSU implements a specialized program for high school students at risk, not graduate high school, then we will see a decrease in the number of students dropping out of school. So moving on to the last domain, we've already covered socially emotional, mental health and wellbeing. Engagement and truancy, the final one that we have to address with the state is academic achievement and success. So based on our problems of practice, what we found is based on the district level data projected proficiencies for students scoring level three and four, just on the higher end of the scoring, one and two is on the lower. On the smarter balance assessment, which is our local assessment, ELA, S U-wide, forty, only forty point eight percent reached the upward tier in our smarter balance local assessment. And we also said that, you know, during this time that we were in COVID, there were inconsistent and non-inclusive learning opportunities. And that's some of the, one of the things that this COVID and the ESSER fund is supposed to do is, is really bringing it up to, we're including everybody, looking at equity at all the schools and get us up there. So that was another thing that was identified. And the third one was lack of support and lack of clarity on which supporters are needed for these learners. Once again, it goes back to say, now that we were out for such a long time and we're back, we need more clarity in what we need to establish getting kids back, getting them back on track and how are we going to make up those, the, the ground that was lost. So based on the goal and strategies for that, we're almost done, four more minutes. Hang in there. By June of twenty twenty-two, students scoring level three and four, the upper tier on the smarter balance assessment, and ELA will increase by fifteen percent in students scoring level three and level four on the smarter balance assessment in math will increase by twenty-five percent. So we're trying to give ourselves an actual goal that we're shooting for as educators working with students. So we're back to the if-then statements. If we provide comprehensive summer school and after-school programs at all our schools, which we're really starting to do that now, we use a lot of the ESSER one money, some of the ESSER two to do that, then our students will show an increase in engagement, learning and growth based on the district formative and summative assessments. Second one, goal strategy. If we provide outstanding shoulder coaching and professional development for teachers in math and ELA classrooms, then instruction will result in higher student achievement and learning assessment. Three, if, if WNSU increases the number of interventions to target the learning of loss through the, through intentional MTSS model, MTS meaning multi-tiered systems of support, then we will have more targeted instruction and show an increase in the academic skills on the formative, summative assessments. Next one, goal strategy, keep in mind, if administrators use a common observation tool to ensure teachers are able to make positive use of show, show growth from feedback on their practices, then students, then for students, we benefit from improved classroom instruction. So what this is saying, we want to bring our evaluation and observation model into the twenty-first century and get away from the paper practice like we've been using. So it's an ongoing weekly thing rather than a two to three times a week, year thing. So. Next one, I only have one more after this. If WNSU teachers use an engaged and interactive learning platform, then we can ensure teachers will be able to interact with students online, in person, remotely, or in a hybrid class to increase student engagement in learning in lessons, activities with increased collaboration, creativity, flexibility, resulting in an increased student achievement. We're doing pretty good there, but we want to still be ready for whatever comes down the pike yet. So this really addresses, continues to not just have the technology, but make sure that if we have it, teachers and students know how to use it and train to use it, or it's just going to sit there and fuck us. Six, last one. If WNSU engages in meaningful consultations with all stakeholders, then the administration of WNSU can assure the recovery plan will have far-reaching potential to benefit the entire district. And that means the work that we're going to do with the recovery team, once, you know, the plan that, you know, that we're, we're creating for the state is done, this means this work, the recovery team is going to continue throughout the year. And one of those steps, it's almost like a campaign. We are going to get the public, we're going to get the community involved, and we're going to keep pushing forward. So we're all moving in the same direction. So like I said, that was, I just reviewed tonight, just the problem of practice that we've been working on and the goal and strategy, some of the goals and strategies, the if-then statements that we used as a recovery team. And then later on, more to come, what specific activities are tied to these, how is implementation and evaluation of these plans going to take place? And what are the human resource materials required and how we're going to pay for them? Some comes out of local, some comes out of ESSER, some comes out of title. So those will be the next areas that we're going to discuss. Just to bring aware, so everyone knows that these are good opportunities. So for ESSER two, we have five million eight hundred and twenty-eight. And then ESSER three, which the feds have only released half of it, so we only have half of it so far. But once all said and done, WNSU has thirteen point seventy-nine million dollars that will be used in, and that's more tied to buildings. Buildings and construction and some of the larger projects. And I will be participating in a. Training tomorrow with some other administrators in ESU, Flora will be there as well to really start learning how we can actually use that money. I'm also going to. I reached out to Scott Farr, the director and superintendent of the RBTC, because most of you know that. Our Chris and is overlooked in the state. So I'm reaching out to Scott and hopefully we can get together to see how our ESSR funds can. We can work something with RBTC that we can both benefit from moving forward. So. You know, they're hurting just as much as we are. We send a lot of students there to great program. So, you know, hopefully we're going to come up with something that both sides are going to benefit from. So. That's it.
Thank you, Chris. I want to say clearly. That there are a lot of things I like about. Chris Pratt's leadership in this district. And what you just heard here, it's got to be pretty darn close to the top, if not the top. And that is the fact that we're really talking about 21st century learning. And we're talking about how we identify problems and. What solutions look like. And I really want to mend. Chris, as well as all the people we got working to back you up. For the. Work product that you just laid out here, notion that we will set goals. It's, I think, pretty big because we have not, in my experience, been. Large in terms of setting concrete goals. In W N E S, I've been very glad to see that. I just push on on that. So. Once again, thank you for the report. I think it's excellent. I do want to go around the table and find out if there are any questions. And I have a hand from George Smith, I believe. George, you're recognized.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say that was a. Great presentation. I really liked the if and then scenarios. Or explanations. I do feel like it was kind of a high level view. And toward the end of your presentation, it seemed to get into more of the hows. And as a parent, as a board member, as a community member. But mostly as a parent, I'm going to be looking forward to. Hearing about more more of the how you're going to accomplish those things. Accomplish those goals. But otherwise, I appreciate it. It was a good, good presentation.
Thank you, George. Yeah, we'll be getting into the the next three are. Specific activities that are tied to what I just did. Implementation and evaluation of what we're doing to make sure it's getting done. And then the resources. So if I went over all of that tonight, you'd be here for quite some time. So. I'm trying to find that balance. But yeah, the next three stages are really exciting. We're going to, because. We have, you know, we have ideas, but you know, I'll be meeting with. To get the recovery team. Back around the table so we can continue to talk about. And work on all the stuff that we've been doing. So. I think we have a great team of people with that thirty something plus recovery team. It's a lot of people, but I know David and. Cheryl, you guys are part of that. Priscilla's part of it and part of it, but I I feel that we're. Working together as a team and it's not about what position you play, where you are, we're all kind of. Throwing it out all on the table and trying to figure out what we can do to to move forward. So it's definitely a team effort.
Well, thank you for that, Chris. Are there additional questions or comments? I want to go to those who are not in the room first. Speak up. Have you got a question? Do I have a hand still or is that?
Just got her hand up.
Yeah, I can comment. I would like it noted on that too, though, that the recovery team voted that the academic. Goals were the most important thing. We we said, we did academic with the first two. We we voted on nine different things. Three for each of the groups were in there and the top two were both academic. The third one was the social emotional and then the others sprinkled down through. So the academic was definitely a priority. For us in that with what happened through COVID for the last year. And then the social emotional kind of enters into that and everything that we do as well. So. I know Chris, when he presented that, did them in the order of that they were first presented to us rather than the way we voted. The importance of them. So just noting.
Yeah, they weren't any, they were order and order of domain. And so. That's why, that's why academics had, we had six for academics rather than three and four for the other twos, but it wasn't in any particular order of importance. For the recovery plan because the domains fall in a certain order. You could flip and mix up the domains, but that's a good point, Priscilla, because yes, the overall, the academics came first. That's why there's so many other. Goals and strategies for the academics because. When we did our work as recovery team, that's what popped up.
Jess, is your hand?
I do. Thank you. I actually have two comments and I'll end with a question. My first comment is. Mr. Pratt did a wonderful presentation, but we should acknowledge, I think there's something like forty people that worked on putting this together. And I think they spent a lot of time on it and we should thank them. My second comment is a sort of perpetual theme that I bring up. Just to make sure that we do indeed have no child. Who's not able to reach their potential. Kids that need extra help. Kids that are behind. Kids who don't have a great life at home. They need all these resources and we are happy to give them all these resources. But we do have another group of kids, like the ones that are consistently scoring threes and fours. That also they have. A even higher potential to reach. And I really don't want them forgotten. I want us going above the state minimum requirements and remembering those kids too. And I know we have sort of finite resources and one of my perpetual concerns. With the MTSS. Is that we're asking classroom teachers. To. Modify their lesson plans for kids that are at every level or kids that need. Sort of a different mode of instruction. Some kids. Take lecture better than they take reading instructions. Some kids are the other way around, et cetera. And we're already asking a lot of our classroom teachers. And with the MTSS, I know there's a lot of classroom teachers that basically they have to. Do each of their lesson plans like three times because they know they have different groups of kids. So I really hope we're able to support them. So that they can get the kids that need help. Get them all the help they need. But the kids that are thriving are ready, also get them that extra push to reach their full potential as well. Just something I don't want forgotten. And then my last question is for Chris. A lot of our federal grants, we're basically not allowed to use the money to pay for things that we already do. It has to be like a new position or a new program or something. Is this money? Tied into that? Is it like that as well?
No, yeah, I mean, Title I, we can't supplant and pay for things that we already have. This is different because it's recovery. We may need to, you know. No, it's 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 different, but it's a good question. They're different than the Title I funds that we see. Because with the federal Title I grants, we can't supplant. Supplant means, for instance, if all of a sudden we've had a, you know. A trauma coach at the school and all of a sudden we get the grant money, we can't turn around and all of a sudden take that money and stop paying for a position we already had. But no, that's not the case in. The asset grants. I mean, there are a lot of restrictions in regards to one, two and three and how we can use them. But. So far, there's there's not a whole lot in regards to surplanting. So thank you for the question.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Chris, thank you. Great reporting.
Thank you.
So the final. I am here under superintendent report. Would be proposals for S R spending and this may in fact be more of a timetable for determining. What your proposals are for S R spending. So. What would you like to tell us, Chris?
Yeah, so some important dates that we have coming up because, and you know, David and I had this conversation and stuff is that people understand is that. There's no like timeframe for when you have to start spending the S R money. There's a lot of paperwork as. The business office will tell you regardless of any of the S R money. So I'm just going to lay out some of the important dates just to give you an idea as an administration what we're looking at because right now. The S R money for S R two that's been spent was, like we said before, was for the summer program because we had to use that. Other than that. There's not a whole lot. The one thing, and it goes back to Jess's question about the spending is that we cannot. In in some of the federal grants, we can spend and then get reimbursed for what we bought. This case here is not a reimbursement grant. We have to get three, four. In some cases, five different levels of approval from the state before we spend the money. So that's good to know, but the dates coming up is so we have. November first, the application was due, January fifth of 2022 deadline to have approved grant awarded. And then it jumps to September thirtieth, 2023, close. Of the period of performance. So because by November, by the November thirtieth of 2023, all final invoices are due to the A O E. And so. Even though we have that, we have this money. The. Process for spending it is very time consuming. So it's not like some of the other grants, we get the grant, we bought something, reimburses for it. This year. I mean, it's going to take us a while to spend any of the money just because of the approval process for these grants. So. I think by the time we get to the recovery team back in order and stuff. We probably still not really spending any S R money because. Anything, any money that we have spent, like in the summer school. Once we bought it, they have to go in and look at it and make sure it's what we agreed to buy and stuff. So. It's it's a different type of grant. We have an end date when we have to spend it because there's no starting date of when we can, which isn't a bad thing because I think. We don't want to spend all the money upfront because I think we want to always go back and revisit how we're doing in case we have to. Tweak something, say, oh, we didn't realize we wanted to use this money. One thing I am finding is that we can't, you know, we don't like to use grants on any level to pay for positions because when the grant money dries up, what that means is we're going to be stuck holding the bag. And we just can't afford to do that right now. But there are certain times where we have to say, you know what, we have to. Do it, get what we can for the years we have the grant and see how that plays out. So we do have some positions in the grant that we're looking at, knowing that. This is a one to two year position and then we're going to have to revisit it and the level of importance with the boards as a position we keep and pick up locally. Or we're just going to say, we did our due diligence. So S R spending is. Slow, but we want to make sure that we do spend all that money. But we want to do it according to the plan that we create. It seems we're still in the process of doing that. That's where we are with the S R spending.
Questions? Questions from anyone who is on Zoom? Once again. Great job. Keep us informed. Box more when we have our regular meeting at the end of the month on this.
Thank you.
Next item of six B and this is an. Update on the activities of the Coalition for Vermont Student Equity. I imagine I am your representative on that. I had some involved with it. And a very brief review is of course the fact there was a great deal of concern, I think, beginning with Andy Cost. Who noticed that if what is referred to as the student waiting formula, which is additional funding that follows. Kids who need more resources typically defined as I E P or English second language or. Rural or kids who are eligible for free or reduced lunches. The additional waiting for those kids simply. Did not line up the reality of actually educating them. One of the more interesting things that the Vermont Legislature did a few years ago was to decide to move. Special education from a reimbursement style program to a block grant. And the unfortunate potential consequences of block grant is any shortfall to be made up by local taxpayers, I believe. Andy, that you and some of the other directors did the math and then. With the Northeast Supervisor, we would have been looking at around a million dollar a year. Hit to local taxpayers to make up that shortfall. There were a couple of bills that were in the legislature this past session. There was. H fifty four, which was a bill sponsored by Laura Sebelia over in the House. Or is independent, sometimes being Republican. And we had a somewhat less comprehensive bill that came out of the Senate, Bill Ruth, which is S thirteen. And fortunately was very good guidance by a skilled lobbyist in Montpelier that the Coalition. Supported. We walked out. With. S thirteen becoming law. It's a very interesting situation because at one point the Senate President wrote down. Predicted there would be no action on it. And the session just ended, but ironically it passed both houses adamantly. We're off the races. One of the great, great immediate benefits of that was two year moratorium. Which is on what is known as excess spending penalty, which unfortunately. Affected this high school last year, but has been essentially abated for this year. Currently, what's going on is that S thirteen created a task force, four members of the Senate. Four members of the House to sit down and see what they can do with the weights. And there are other, there are other proposals. One is to overhaul the entire. Tax code as far as education goes, which I think will be a multi-year plan, to say the very least. The other is, there is some. Impetus for what are known as categorical grants. Very good example of the category of grant would be the small schools grant. Which kind of has turned out to be one of those, now you see it and now you don't grants. That's why we believe. That waiting is our better method of funding. The real needs, it's. Require additional resources. The. Task force has met already, meeting again on July twenty ninth. Once again, our lobbyist has been working diligently on behalf of almost two dozen. And I think very rapidly climbing school boards in this state. Is encouraging boards to engage in letter writing campaigns on the individual level. And I also have to tell you bluntly, and I'm glad I'm sitting in this room tonight here at Fellow's Falls Union High School because I've. Said this before, but one of my former school board colleagues. A local craft, she was chair of this board and Sally Warren once said, you don't build B one bombers with intentions, you build them with money. And it is the reality that the efforts which gotten us where we are now have not come free. And very soon I will be asking both ESU and individual boards. To consider helping support the efforts of the alliance because very bluntly, it's a situation that you can spend a little now. Save a lot later and the cost benefit analysis that is very, very favorable. So I anticipate I'll come back at the regular meeting in July and formalize that. So. That's my report from the Coalition. Any questions or comments? Chris?
David, can you mention again to everyone listening, who actually makes up the alliance? Because it's not a small alliance.
Okay, the alliance was actually initiated by Burlington School Board. And Burlington Board members did analysis as to the schools which were going to. Get hit hard by the waiting. get hit hard by uh the waiting formula, which would be adversely impacted by to move block grants instead of the reimbursement model and uh shall we say, put out a request. There there is um an actual Coalition Board. Locally, our rep is Dave Scholes, who chairs the Wyndham Southeast Board. Um heaven help me, who's uh in Rutland. Um I apologize if your name goes in my head and out of my head. And up in Burlington is Kendra Sowers, who's one of the people who got it off the board, or got off the ground, rather. And uh there are still two open seats on the Coalition Board. We have a uh fairly uh extensive conversation going on right now with uh North Country. Uh I think that's John Castle Superintendent. Am I correct, Chris?
I believe so, yes.
And we're hopeful that those boards will join in as well. But I think the count right now is twenty-one or twenty-two or twenty-three. I'm sorry, I can't name them all. The WNESU is a supporter, but we may even want to more more formally formalize that relationship with uh all of the boards in Wyndham Northeast because there is strength in numbers. So thank you for asking. Chris, certainly if you're going to add anything else.
No, I think it's just important. I just think it's important for uh people to, you know, listening to understand it. It's not a small, just localized to southern Vermont region that this Coalition is doing. It's statewide. Hannover, Inover is involved too as well.
Well, I'm not sure about Hannover because uh they're in the Riprendale District.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm I'm not certain where Riprendale stands on it. And I realize we may be speaking essence therapy. Riprendale is Interstate Compact, correct? If I'm wrong, Chris? Between Hannover and Norwich. Am I right on that?
Correct.
Okay, so um uh we should find out
Yeah.
about that. Wonderful question. By the way, it's Allison Knopf, uh who's the board member in Rutland. Her husband is a a member of the legislature. So it's nice to have friends in tight places. Okay, uh do we have any unfinished business? I'm not aware of any. Uh any anyone at home aware of any? Okay, then. Uh we're down to director's comments and uh somewhere I believe it's written that the last uh the the first shall be last and the last shall be first. Since I was last the last time, I think to the consternation of some people at the board table, I think I will go first tonight. There are no objections. And I have a a couple of comments. I need to put my glasses on for. And first is that um uh I personally, and I think that administration as well, would be very interested in any comment that we can receive on how the hybrid meeting here worked tonight. On this end of it, I think that we are following people who are not in the room fairly accurately. But there's always room for improvement. So cards, letters, but most importantly, emails to uh Chair and uh Superintendent would be greatly appreciated. My second item here is minutes. As Cheryl pointed out, the minutes, I think, were uh comprehensive and uh for the most part, very accurate. And it's any criticism at all that I can uh levy against the minutes since they were late. And Chris and I have a mild disagreement of whether um unapproved minutes need to be available in five days or ten. But either case, we were a little bit over on these. And I did peruse the other boards uh in the ESU and found out that maybe we were a little bit behind in some other board minutes as well. So it's something that I think we need to tighten up on um because at some point uh we may get pulled on it. So um just that's a heads up. And my other heads up is we had discussion um a while back about three and eight district-wide uh master calendar so that we knew what important dates were, that also we would know as a for instance, when select boards are meeting because sometimes school boards and select boards do need liaise with each other. So I'm I'm hoping that certainly by the time school opens that we can have a uh master calendar um ready to go so that a board member uh sitting in Westminster knows when a select board is going to meet in Athens and vice versa. And that is uh my uh comment. Molly?
I'm good. Glad to be here.
Thank you, Molly. It's great that you are here. George?
Yes, a couple of things. Uh first, I um didn't get the memo that uh you guys, there there would be in-person option. I I see a seat right between uh David and Molly that would have my name on it and I would have gladly been there to uh be with you guys tonight. Not sure why I missed it. But anyway, moving on from that, um and now uh again announcing there will be an open position on the Rockingham School Board coming very shortly. And um please, anybody who's interested, uh send letters of intent to uh Nicole at the business office. And um responding to your comment, David, uh that you perused other boards in the ESU, I I I wasn't on that memo either and um just wanted to point that out. But anyway, um glad to see that there's some in-person stuff going on and uh look forward to more of that. Uh seeing more of that going forward. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, George. First feedback on the uh hybrid meeting. All right. Uh Jessa West Clark?
I am all set. Thank you.
Jessa, Lynn Morgan?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Priscilla Lambert?
Uh yes, I appreciated the hybrid. I did not find out until I looked at the agenda that it would be in person and the other, although that by state law, um where at that point I realized, but I did appreciate the hybrid since I'm traveling and um couldn't be there in person. Were I in Vermont, I would have been there in person, absolutely, and would have enjoyed sitting next to you, George. I also appreciated your comments um David about um minutes because yes, the minutes have been kind of lagging and I know the office is working hard on those and trying to get those all caught up. So I would appreciate those as um clerk for the WNSU. I do need to be sure that I get those signed and I haven't done any since March, although we did approve one and I will get those done. But yes, thank you all for that and I appreciated everybody tonight. Thank you so much.
Priscilla, um Cheryl?
Well, thank you. David, let me just make a couple of comments. Uh I think most people know that the Vermont State Board of Education conditionally approved uh the Westminster Township having a school board again. On June thirtieth, an election was held for three persons to be a part of that school board. Uh David Major. Thank you. Chris, David Major, uh Charlie Hutchison and I were each elected to the new Westminster Town School Board. That board does not take full responsibility until July one, twenty twenty-two. Our responsibilities for now are to work with Athens and Grafton as a part of the Wyndham Northeast Unified uh Union Elementary School District on uh the financial terms of Westminster once again being its own school board. Uh there's another election coming up on August thirty-one where the voters of the three towns will be asked to vote on the financial terms. I'll say very quickly, it's a pretty straightforward circumstance. Westminster knows that it owns the debt on the gymnasium that was built some years ago. And so we will once again, take direct responsibility for that. Uh the voters will also be in Westminster asked to vote to expand the board from three people to five. An election to expand the board won't take place actually until next March. Uh so there are a lot of steps involved with this conditional approval by the State Board of Education, but uh the town of Westminster is doing everything we've been instructed to do by the by the state board and by the attorneys uh to fulfill all of this. That's a long way of saying also that I will be resigning then tomorrow night from the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District because of my now new role on the Westminster Town School Board. I'll stay directly involved in all the things going on with the Supervisory Union. I'll look forward to continuing to participate in meetings. I won't be voting uh anymore, at least uh not until perhaps a year from now, uh is probably how that looks. But uh all of us on the Westminster School Board will will be actively involved. And Westminster, at least uh up until July one of twenty twenty-two, has two members from the town. You know, everybody on the elementary school board represents and serves the children in all towns. May I be clear about that? But we still also have people elected from a geographic location. And so there are two people uh who will continue to be on the Union Elementary School Board. So that's a very long director's report from me, but just to say, it's my pleasure to serve uh as a as a part of all of this and uh to have been a voting member of the ESU Board. I'll now simply continue to be a participant and look forward to that as well.
Thank you, Cheryl. Certainly a lot has happened over the last couple of years. Um day the next meeting, Chris, you correctly found wrong, it's July twenty-eighth. I presume we will be back in this room again. Uh those who are unable, we would very much like to see you on the screen. Bring a few friends. And um I am going to declare us adjourned at uh seven, we'll call it uh seven thirty-eight. Thank you all for being here.